So maybe.
I mean, it's okay. You're not in trouble. You can come join us.
I like this.
See, what's his name?
Just Paul or what? Is it just Paul or is that too deliberate?
It's not.
Oh, he's all your record.
Oh, good. It's so good. This is a new thing in life stuff. Doesn't matter to the people that see you. Sports, yeah, especially, yeah, you know, practice. You say my whole mission. We're probably still on.
They did write anything about the.
I know that it's a school because there's something here.
I get right.
I already know that it's the place that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, simple.
One thing.
We are general. This, you know, it's those places. Yeah. So why do I make this question? I'm not gonna give any.
And.
I put it this way. Can't get better.
Oh, yeah. Feel like I shrunk. There's.
But they were.
Yeah.
It was. Maybe.
Yeah. I don't know.
But the Republican riots will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the great standing as one nation under God, in the physical and liberating presence of our. Okay, I will call trustee Briggs. Trustee Ellis, that be Mayor Younger. I am present and trustee Ivy is absent with notice. Um, we're gonna jump right to chief who has. Or the other head out.
Let's train the rescue squad. Um, just very quickly, first and foremost, we are down two officers right now, one injured, one just went on family medical. Happy to report that our very tenuous weekend where there was a lot of uncertainty, baby and mom. Well. Thank. Well, at this point, back to mouse a baby to officer D. Mitchell. Baby went, we're happy to report that she did have. So due to the situation, he will be out on extended family medically for a period of time, probably sixteen weeks.
Congratulations to. But that's another door.
We will say definitely exciting. No, he's just very excited. Welcome to your doctor's. And then we did have an incident last week involving a suspect that we arrested for violation of criminal contempt or order protection harassment. Suspect came in, we had him downstairs, he became irate, he did throw our data master, eleven thousand dollar machine and did break it. Um, smash it on the ground. He's been, you know, subsequently charged with that. Uh, so we are did file the charge with the court. Are man into the jail with no bail. The good news to that is while Iowa was having a heart attack over the cost of that, because they didn't know how we're gonna replace it. Is that New York State has homied up and said that they will take care of the replacement costs and. Fixing. The only thing we had to do was drive it up there, which we drove it up to Albany Flatley in exchange for that. Them standing up and fixing it for us. So the. We did have a couple other, several other domestics that have been going on, some other arrests as well, seems on a juvenile problem. While we've had a couple of qualifications at McDonald's overall, seems to starting to settle down. Uh, we do have Halloween this Friday, Devil's Night. Devil's Night looks like my friend Officer Rain is gonna be on the job. So that should keep things down and Devil's Night are on Halloween, we will be out there in force. So we'll see how that goes as well. That's this Friday. Again, I remind the public that curfew for eighteen and under is. Or under eighteen rather is eight thirty. Yeah, and there will be a trunk or treat at the school that night, starts at six o'clock. Uh, feel free to stop by there. It's always a good time at the trunk or treat. So hopefully there'll be a bunch of people that come over there. But we will be out on foot patrol. I'm enjoying a lot of foot patrol in. In Green Acres, we have UTP out as well, different areas and also uniform cars as well. Patrol on the streets to keep everybody safe and hopefully incident free on Halloween. Lastly, I will bring you up to the podium, Christian Arbel, currently in the academy, Christian. He is a retired, John Kidd, but I'll say retired, but he was a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. Um, honorably discharged and he's also a certified nursing assistant. He is fluent in Spanish, has a Spanish background. He is currently in the academy and he would like to come and work here. He was interviewed, does that this season by Deputy Mayor Younger and Trustee Briggs. And I could program as well. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, we, we did interview him, interview well. He is to be someone that we need here and will work well here. So I'd like to welcome them aboard if. The board of persons tonight.
Chelsea Briggs. Oh, yeah, I really agree with that. I just hope he stays like. Well, he did turn down Platico to come here, so that was always, that's always a positive.
Okay.
I got the call up. He said, I'll move for his appointment. Is that a training rate first? The point will be effective Wednesday.
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion to appoint effective Wednesday, this Wednesday, training rate. Right, second, till we have a second, all in favor? Uh, thank you for serving the country.
And lastly, we have training tonight. That's why I had to go. I have a, we have a whole. Agenda of training at the end. I want to thank the Elmo Rescue, John DePasso along as well, thank the Elmo Rescue Squad for lending us their. Their house, so to speak. We're doing AED CPR training this evening amongst other items that we're going to be going over for in-service training as well. And Cooper Steve, the New York State Police were kind enough to lend us Cooper Steve Sawyer, who's a certified instructor to teach our class. And he'll be teaching our AED CPR class. Again, great thanks to the Elmo Rescue Squad, TJ DePasso along.
Thanks, appreciate it. Welcome. Okay, um, we'll go to the approval of minutes. I have a motion to approve the October forty twenty five minutes. Any discussions? All in favor? Uh, could I have a motion to approve the October sixteen twenty twenty five minutes for our special meeting? Motion. Uh, any discussions? All in favor? Uh, petitioners and correspondence, we have no one on the agenda for tonight, but would anyone like to speak to the board that is not on our agenda? Mike, uh, sorry, Doug.
Yeah, Anthony. First of all, I got a different information to translate.
So. When I, when I, yeah, after that's okay. Thank you.
And the other thing I wanted to. Say is that lights on Chapel Street is something I've been doing for thirty five years. I'm gonna do it again this year. And I was just curious, is there any way I could possibly shut down? A portion of Chapel Street from Clinton Avenue to Oak Street from like five day clock on December the fifth.
Then it's a great question. You can think on it. Yes.
Where are you talking again?
From Chapel Street from Clinton to Oak Street, shut down from five to eight o'clock on December the fifth. As a lot of people are there, a lot of young kids, I have Santa Misses Claus coming in, you know.
The only, so you know, I guess if that whole stretch all the way up till where it intersects off again, it's just the one, I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yes, it's just from Clinton to Oak Street, which is a, you know, half a block, you know what I mean? You still have access through Costa, through Ida and everything else that are underly is open.
Um, the only question would be neighbors, do your neighbors have an objection? Could they write us a letter just saying that they would not object to it?
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, so, so what we'll do, if it's okay, come to the next meeting, if you just have a letter by then, we'll consider it and then.
All right, go prepare. All right, well, do. If that has any concern I have without. Hopefully, it'll be a good year.
Okay, very set. Well, we're glad you're doing it still, you know. Any, any new exciting attractions coming on?
I can't give them all.
Okay, try.
There's a lot going on, a lot of new stuff, a lot of new programming. I just hope it's all or off.
Okay, I, I believe, I believe you. Um, is anyone else here to see the board tonight? Paul.
Okay, I hope you don't mind that.
Okay, no worries, Paul.
I've got two things I'd like to approach the board with. First one is if the village board would consider changing the definition of R one zoning. I've discussed this with Dan and you other people. R one zoning is single family housing and we have a few locations throughout the village where there are auxiliary buildings. That could be converted to affordable housing and the way the, the statute is. Is worded, only single family houses can be, can be done there and you know, it would avoid a lot of variances and legal problems. If the village would consider changing it or amending it somehow.
And this would be, just to clarify, the portable housing would be accessory dwelling units.
An accessory dwell.
Got it. Okay, so this would be with the intention of right now, if I'm correct, R two and up do allow ADUs, but R one does not.
But ADUs have to be owner occupied.
Correct.
And that's another shrimp in that. So.
So, so right now, the, the question would be, would the board consider simply allowing accessory dwelling units in an R one district?
Yeah, this was the condition that one of them or they made the, you know, a main house would have to be owner occupied, sure as it is in R two.
I, I mean, you know, and that's maybe the first stepping stone, we could implement that as is with the same, same barriers or the same requirements. With, you know, I don't want to speak for the board, but if, you know, perhaps the ZBA, Dan, if you can put together with the IN language. Or we could just copy language over for the existing R two, R three areas. Um, but it is an opportunity to, to maybe revisit ADUs finally in general.
I, I think.
And blanket, blanket statement for R one, R two, R three.
I think for the program, as far as increased housing.
Yeah.
It's something that we really have to look at.
Yeah. Uh, so truthfully, I have reached out to Ulster County Planning. Um, they're gonna provide us some language separately of this. I didn't, I didn't realize that the R one component to this. Um, just because they've worked with a number of other municipalities to help create language, they probably have a really good broad overview of. What ADU language looks like and what it should be, and then maybe we can have a good conversation. Maybe they would even come down and talk to us about it.
I think with, to piggyback on this, I think. You, I, again, some, I've had some questions on manufactured housing. Uh, and I don't know how to answer them right now because we have, you haven't moved on anything. But the state law is very clear, a single family house is a single family house. The. Question of, of manufactured housing like ADUs is a way to help with. The housing shortage. It also gives us the ability to regulate what type of manufactured housing comes in. So it's something that we really have to look at.
Let's, let's tackle the accessory dwelling unit component. I think that is something that can affect a number of different properties throughout the village. And then we consider maybe the manufactured homes.
Okay, so I just have a question. All are, or Dan. Um, give me an example of an area that would fit what you're speaking.
Well, we have, we, we had something for us. We had a meeting. Uh, this past week where a gentleman on Hillcrest Avenue. Has a garage in his. That's behind his house. He has a large yard and he wants to fix up the accessory dwelling for a handicapped child. So that he can have some independence. And. You know, if, if, if we can move forward with this, he would need two different types of variances. He would need an area variance and he would need a use variance. And use variances are very difficult to come by. And, um, if we were able to change this law or the zoning, the definition, definition of the R one zoning. Then the use variance would not be necessary in this particular case. We could put conditions on it, but that's one example. Um, and I think there's a few other, Dan would probably be more to me than that I am. That other instances in it would increase our, you know, our, our housing situation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think he had something else to say.
And the second thing I wanted to bring up was something that I brought up before, and that's the tactic tax exempt status of many. Of several properties that we have in the village that I don't think deserve to be tax exempt anymore.
Sure, Paul, you know, you saw the email that I had sent a couple of months back with the clarification from the assessor, the assessor's office, right?
Right, and, and when I spoke to a few people, if the village board. Would write a letter to the, to the assessor in regards to these, these properties. Um, because these properties aren't being used for taxes and status anymore. Uh, I don't want to get into specifics, but we have. Several, one large location in the residential area that's been this way since I was a little boy, that's not being used for. Type, I think, a tax exempt use. Uh, we have a property near, near, here in the middle of the commercial district. That hasn't been used for a tax exempt purpose in years. Um, and we have some religious, religious buildings that I know are being considered for other uses. But they're not being used for religious purposes. These are things that need to be done, especially in the kind of financial straits that the village is in.
So, you know, and, and again, I, so I, I had reached out to her again about, I want to say three, three weeks ago. Um, just to follow up on a couple of them because she made it very clear that. To challenge a religious exemption would be incredibly difficult, simply because a single day of use would qualify the property. For religious exemption. That was their interpretation. Um, and that's a really high barrier to try to overcome to challenge it.
As long as there's resistance from the other side. Now, I've spoken to people who are involved there.
Yeah.
And they're very willing to have another use to that building as, as other people have suggested. So, I mean, I think it's something that we should explore.
Uh, you know, I, again, I can relay that, but you know, I. I. You know, I guess the question is, right, would the assessor be willing to simply just on a leap of faith? Challenge it, right? And then see if they respond. I don't know if they can even do that.
Okay, and that, yeah, taken the case, but there's other cases too, I mean.
Yeah, so I, I mean, they, they did feel that there were potentially two properties that had a reasonable case. Obviously, you had sent over a list that was a little more extensive than two properties. Right. Um, but even the other large property that I think you're alluding to, they said that, I don't. As I recall, and I'll send you the follow-up email that I received, I'll send the board that too, is that. She, I, she felt that she does not even have the authority in her capacity, given the nature of that property. To change the assessment or basically.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that, that she feels that way, but we as taxpayers are suffering because she doesn't have. The chutzpah to step up. I'm sorry, that's, I mean, truthfully, I mean, that, that property has been. Not used for a tax exempt purpose since I was a little boy.
Sure.
So.
So, so I think, you know, uh. We can challenge and they have to prove that it is tax exempt. You know, from what I understand, you know, there's a form that needs to be filled out with the town. You, you know, that, that, um, that proves that that property is tax exempt and they have to show. Whatever evidence it is, and if they show it, then fine, but if not, then, you know, and if they challenge it, they challenge it.
Right, no, no. Whatever we can do to. We as the village have to do what we can to.
If it's not covered. But Paul said, I think by the village, I can only write a letter to the town to do that, but the town is. Send the assessment, dealing with that and challenging to put it back.
So what we'll do is start having the next meeting, have a letter written for those properties. For, uh, that authorized, he's sending for, you know, basically a motion to send this letter on the path of board. Requesting, requesting a review and a challenge. Yeah.
Can we, can we have a copy of any properties that?
Yeah.
Question.
Yeah, we said, we said our email about the classic meetings of him.
Paul, were there any other properties since that official?
Not really.
Okay.
That's not. Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Mayor, might I make a suggestion? If you have a list of these properties and they're owned by not-for-profits. You go and do a nine ninety search and pull their nine nineties and see if any of them have income listed. For the rental of these properties, because the nine ninety should be public information. If they don't have more than fifty thousand dollars here in income, they will file a postcard filing, but I would include their nine nineties with. The letter sent to the assessor. And document any income they show from rental income of these properties when you send this letter would probably be helpful.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Paul, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Dan?
Just one thing, uh, properties that lose their, their use because of nine, they're not being used for over a year. They, they automatically lose their grandfather clause? Would that have an effect on it?
I mean, that seems more losing to the use as it relates to zoning. I mean, I don't know, you know, the exemption is really just for. It, I, I, I see where you're coming from it, right? Like a property was, I don't know, but it's really, it's really religious predominantly. I don't know, it's a good question. I don't know the answer. Yeah, something to consider. Okay, thanks, Dan. Um, is anyone else here to see the board tonight? Mike, sorry, thank you. Mike, you're here as a concerned resident, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Everybody, this time, yeah. My concern is, uh, intersections of Center Street and two oh nine and Canal Street two oh nine and Church and Center. For some reason, we have a extra flow running through red lights. The other morning, coming down, going to the office, I'd attract a trailer, run to a red light, looking at being assuredly no cops coming down. And it just seems excessive right now.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys need to get money for cameras on the lights.
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm intrigued to see, we had cameras on Village Hall, um, that definitely point towards at least one of these intersections. I can definitely speak with the chief to see if we can't just ramp up a little bit of enforcement. I know how tough that is.
Most municipalities that you go through, usually have lights on it, so if you run through it, can take a picture of the lights playing. I don't know, there's grand money out there, which I know is, the police shouldn't have a cop sit, that sit there and.
Yeah, have a red light camera.
It had it Maple and Main, that Washington and Main.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, just. You can't always tell who's gonna run the red light because when your window is open, your car gearing up. Yeah.
You know, it's, it's an interesting question. Are red light cameras legal outside of the city of New York? Because I know.
Here's on Long Island.
Cameras are not.
They're legal in Florida.
Okay, well, I meant upstate New York, John. So I don't know if they've recovered this, but county is doing the stoplight cameras. Yes. On buses. Charged the bus companies. I don't know if red light camera is, could be added into this.
I know the asshole, Matty, just got sued down there, there was a camera, like.
It's so like.
Quality for a hundred million dollars because those cameras were, were, you know, and people had to pay fine and, and, you know, and that's happening now.
Yeah, and, and so, but just to be clear, just because I know sneak cameras specifically, again, it's a civil, it's a civil penalty, but outside of the state. Outside of the city of New York, they are not, they're prohibited for use, but red light cameras at least potentially are not. Okay, all right, we can definitely take into account.
Yeah, because like I said, this is just the common one, so wait till it's spring or summer, come up and drive it for it, yeah, sure.
For, actually, Mike, actually, once I got here, well, there are a great few. So, Mike, do you have a motion? Actually, with two motions, I have a, maybe sewer plant. Um, if you can walk us through quickly, if you buy your servicing agreement with Bureau Field Service Company in Vienna for the preventive maintenance. So this is an established, making its contract that we've already had, who has expired.
We had it, we expect it was a three-year.
Or about two.
Contract for fifteen thousand, we paid upfront. Um, and now they came back with a three-year contract. Now, this is. Three years later, they came back with a three-year contract for fifteen thousand dollars or a five-year for twenty thousand. So you pay upfront, you come out one day, they change your oil, they check everything out, do we need something? And that's not. So far, we've been lucky. They need something, they will change it the next time they come to the bottom here, so it doesn't cost any extra money. So, and it's sole provider, manufacturer, manufacturer, so maybe it's virtual, comes out. So, I mean, to me, it's, it's a good deal for the village as opposed to a single visit, which can run up to six to seven thousand dollars. So overall, saving over five-year period, plus your front, but not worry about it again.
Okay.
Also with number five on the resolutions.
Second, say, all in favor? Uh, and then we have a motion authorizing payment in the amount of two thousand fifty dollars to Opelco's research for web testing on recognition of the water treatment plant operator.
Move it.
Okay, second. And just to give you enough thing.
All in favor?
Just as, as you saw the emails, we have one person or one company that is not abiding by the industrial user permit. So I sent you a copy of the email and I sent Nina a copy, you know, I think it's gonna be time for fines.
Okay.
I have not heard from them.
Yep, I've seen those emails, understood.
Okay, so I, I sent it to D and I have to book them, but, uh, I think it's time similar for. All right, give me most of it. Thank you.
Okay, and so just to confirm, all in favor? I, I know that, okay. Okay, um, so discussion, uh, just a reminder, uh, on October thirty first, Halloween this coming Friday. Uh, it'd be last day that we can collect taxes in-house. You know, obviously, we don't want to, effectively after that point, the county has a short window for about two weeks. Where they too will accept payments for back tax or for taxes owed for this current fiscal year. After which it will begin their collection process at a later point. Um, I'd encourage anybody, I know it's tough and I know times are tough right now, but it only gets harder if you don't pay now. Um, or pay the county, we cannot unfortunately enter into any kind of payment plan. Um, or pay the county, we cannot unfortunately enter into any kind of payment plan. Um, prohibited by our agreement with the county. Uh, so I would encourage anybody, which you can try, uh, by the October thirty first, the last day, we can accept it in house or. Uh, mail that has to have a uh post, right, postmark by the thirty first.
So, so Michelle, can anyone before the thirty first enter into a payment plan?
Not for. Um. The act code states that you have to have the, are here paid, so usually it's for prior. So they can't get a payment, so they don't pay by the thirty first, their tax, Phillips taxes is it, and they pay a portion, they can't do a payment plan for this year's taxes. If they're a prior year, no, this year's taxes, but no, there's two payment.
Two payment, meaning that, so.
Have to be paid.
Right, so when the tax bills came out, there was an opportunity to make two payments. And so they would have to make the second or the first payment by October thirty first, and whatever the balance is would go to the county.
Got you. Thank you. Um, second, uh, we became, uh, after a lot of documents submitted over the last seven, eight months. Uh, pro housing certified, which is a state certification, your HCR. Uh, which basically means, uh, we are willing to consider or already have. Uh, zoning laws in place, uh, planning uh processes in place that encourage development of new housing. Um, we are a village, we have a more urban uh competition. So some of our zoning already lends to it compared to, say, the town with five acre minimum lot sizes. Um, we, due to the lack of building in Allenville, don't qualify based on that percentage, but because the board has a resolution. Making a st- uh statement that we would encourage new building, um, that is qualifier for. It unlocks our ability to uh apply for our New York Forward Grant, which is an requirement and also. Helps other projects that could come into the village, especially a larger project. Uh, qualify for different opportunities via state funding. Um, so it's kind of a barrier to entry for certain things, the state wants to make sure that we're doing our part to encourage housing. Um, so it's something to get done, and I'm glad everybody supported it and we got over that hurdles. Um, New York Forward Discussion, uh, last Wednesday, we had our public outreach meeting, uh, which was very well attended, I thought very productive. Um, it was a great chance for the public to really talk about what they imagine Allenville being in the next number of years. Even beyond the scope of what a New York Forward Grant is, which tends to be very gas town focused. Um, I thought it was very productive, right, it was it was really eye opening, it was just a great way to have a low stakes conversation with all of our residents. And let them have a conversation with each other about, um, you know, what they like, what they would hope to improve and where they want to go. Um, one of those ideas kind of helped our consultants kind of piece together. Uh, components to a grant application that do fit the guise of the New York Forward Grant. Um, and taking into consideration, but it's also just great feedback for us, so that when other different types of opportunities will up with different uh specification areas. Um, we can use that information and kind of like hone in on the application for something else. Um, so it was good, I thought it was really nice to just hear people speak freely and talk about what they think Allenville is to them. Um, I would encourage anybody in this audience, if you haven't, um, I'm gonna, we'll get the link up on our website and post it on social media. Uh, there is a community survey that I would encourage anybody to fill out, very much similar to what the public session was. Gathering feedback, because that is an important component of an application. Uh, you know, a steering, uh, not a steering committee, a selection committee wants to hear what the people thought. You know, they want to see that real data as a part of it, um, so I would encourage anybody, please, you know. Take five minutes, go through it, give us your thoughts, because it helps the application. Um. So for a reminder that in approximately two weeks, uh, it's Wednesday.
November twelfth.
November twelfth.
From nine AM to eight, yeah.
Thank you, Michelle. We have our referendum, uh, to uh for local law number four, to extend the amount of money, uh, to twenty years, another twenty years beyond. The expiration date that is coming in about a year and a half from now, it's not a referendum for use, it is simply a referendum to extend. Um, I would encourage everybody to come out, make your voice heard on the issue. Um, you know, it is kind of the singular reason why the municipality is still here. It is a legacy handed down over two generations now, and it's a question for everybody to answer, what do we do the rest of it, it's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and if it does not extend, then it will simply roll into the general fund, uh, without public input for its usage after that. Um, three, November twelfth, nine AM to eight, you know, village hall. Okay, uh, Clinton Avenue Bridge Walk, Doug, our favorite section of the evening. Um, unfortunately, not much change, we're still trying to work through our right of way issues, Doug, thank you again for the contact they've made on that. Um, I think with one of the properties, uh, they'll probably. Have to escalate what they need to do, uh, separate of some of the other ones, um, and then we'll go for there. Uh, other than that, it's really right away, you know, I think that's a, we can get there, so as soon as they close that out, uh, you know, we'll be on our way. Um, okay.
Yeah.
All right, and so Fred isn't here, but I do want to speak on if, um. We have a couple of weeks, uh, that Fred's working through, we have a week protection coming, so that is gonna be probably bill. Um, there's kind of getting some irregular readings on where it could be, they kind of honed in on one spot, but nothing's showing right now. Um, but, uh, Rich Winters, uh, Little Water was here today and it's gonna come back. Hopefully sometime next year, you can sound different areas, uh, to try to go a little closer. Um, okay, so resolutions, uh, did number one, I have a motion authorized, can I have a motion authorized to pay in the Department of Judas? You got a seventy eight thousand, eight hundred forty six dollars, forty four cents, uh, for invoice related to Clinton Avenue Bridge over North Gully. Uh, this will be reimbursed by the New York State DOT.
Oh, I was.
Special. Yes.
Um, this is part of the money we already agreed to give them, this is just one of the invoices that already came.
Correct, so basically DOT at certain periods of time asks for a reimbursement, uh, stipend.
Yeah.
The law, but, um, that period came up, so Department of Judas created, uh, their invoice. Or worked on during this period of time, since their last, uh, request for reimbursement, or our last request for reimbursement, um, is still time binging here.
My second.
All in favor?
I.
Um, a motion to reappoint one, uh, Pagan, to Allenville Housing Board term expiring July twenty third. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Uh, motion, uh, and actually, before we go into this, I'll have the motion, so we have a motion to forest to authorize grants granted to municipal cooperation agreement. Uh, NY class on the behalf of the, uh, village of Allenville for investment purposes. Um, this is to basically give us another investment option, uh, in addition to our. I would say our, uh, lending partners at N L T Bank in, uh, Thank You Green County. Uh, right now, we take our tax money that comes in, uh, for short periods of time and put it into a C V, a certain. About six months, so that we generate interest on it, uh, before we get to a place where we actually have to draw. Beyond those funds that we have not in the C V, um, NY class is a municipal specific, um, investment. Uh, uh, all at DeWell, uh, the governing body, uh, what is great about this is that there are no extraction limitations. And the rates are highly competitive, so with the C V, there's a potential that it may be locked up for about six months. Uh, the rates we're seeing from NY class, uh, match or see those CDs. Um, there are a number of local municipalities who utilize it, um, and truthfully gave us this information to say, you know, this is a. A potential good opportunity to jump in on, uh, especially if you need to stay liquid and also see if it's greater. Um, so with that, if I can have that motion, uh, I've been training Casey Hope, this will be the authorized signers with permission to manage the accounts and process transactions. Certainly be our treasurer, and I would sign off the recommendation.
So with that, uh, can I open up for discussion?
Sorry.
Question, second.
That's.
Second.
I just want to make sure that you said managed account and process transactions, the process transactions is gonna be on approval of the board, correct?
I would add, yes.
I just wanted to make, that's not.
No, no, absolutely, and and I think that's a good point, yes, I I.
Put that up to the, to the motion.
Yes, yeah.
On the.
Yeah, and and I think frankly, it has to be by law, we need a right to, I mean, any kind of monetary investment would have to come through.
Oh.
Okay, let's just say he's putting it in the bank.
Yes, which we have to, we have to authorize.
Well, they're putting it in, but.
Right.
But it's a process transaction, I just wanted to be clear on the writing.
It's a fair question for record. Yep, absolutely. Um, okay, so four, uh, so all in favor?
I.
Uh, number five, we've completed, number six, a motion authorizing reimbursement of mileage in the amount of two hundred and thirty three dollars in pennies. And pollen from September eighteenth to twenty twenty five to October twenty third. All in favor?
I.
Uh, motion to authorize reservation of up to five hundred tons of rope salt at seventy four fifty, uh, per ton, will be two hundred fifty per ton minimum. Uh, this is state contract bid, um, on the recommendation of the street department informant, uh, not to exceed. An order of three hundred tons without, uh, board permission, that will exceed our budget allocation.
I was just going to ask a motion to open for discussion.
Yes.
Um, so.
Seven, second, okay.
Second, so the five hundred tons is what we ordered, this is for the year.
Exit reservation, so so we will, we are, uh, based on this, we will be required to purchase eight hundred and fifty tons. Uh, which is approximately, I would say, about nineteen thousand dollars, our budget allocation is twenty five, uh, thousand dollars. So that's why I would recommend that we include a, uh, component saying that not to exceed three hundred tons without our approval, okay. Um, again, on the recommendation of the street department board. Okay, um. All in favor?
I.
Thank you. Okay, um, board report, uh.
Can you do the last one?
Um, sorry.
I'm gonna do it, Denver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Yeah.
It's why it's great to have a hard comment.
Well, this is, this is an updated, so we, uh, received clarification, we talked about it at our last meeting, um. Many of our bulletproof vests, uh, or existing, uh, officers are obsolete, they are outside of their five year. Uh, life cycle, uh, the union has been very lenient with us. Um, we have many new hires in that period of time, and we can fit it. Um, as we also talked about, the New York State will provide, uh, reimbursement.
Yeah.
A portion of this purchase, there is a federal component, which is on hold unfortunately. Um, and but we may be able to reapproach that. Um, this is state contract, uh, state bid, federal, uh, Eastern is the distributor, and Point Blank is the best. Um, so if I get a, uh, motion to purchase the Point Blank bulletproof vest on state contract, uh, number six nine four two seven from Eastern, uh, Federal Eastern International. The amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred ninety two dollars, twenty eight cents.
A moment.
A second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, sorry, uh, with that, uh, trusted break, board report, anything to report?
All right, my brother.
Let's leave Ellis.
Um, Friday's Halloween, uh, we are still trying to have a trunk retreat, if you haven't gotten in contact with me or Bill Brown. Or our lovely John Gavars there, and you would like to do a trunk, please let us know.
Lovely John Gavars?
Right.
Please let us know, or the mayor, we don't have that many trunks right now, we don't want to cancel the event, so if you do know anybody who would like to do a trunk. It is greatly appreciated if you contact one of us, right? And that's that.
Cool, um, uh, Deputy Mayor, go ahead. Yeah, um, be safe, uh, go to one of these truck retreats, get out to Green Acres, uh, Halloween in Allenville is awesome. Thank you guys for, you know, picking up the, uh, truck retreats, that's always a well attended event, um, appreciate it, um. We are, so I'll say I have nothing else to say other than to reiterate. If I could have a motion, thank you sessions, uh, for contractual and little lots of return. Second, all in favor?
I.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, great.
Second. So.
It's DJ.
Valence.
Yeah.